Followed meeting in order. Rocktable, please.
Persick?
Here.
Kerwin?
Here.
Larry Hall?
Here.
Kirby Hall?
Here.
Tudor?
Here.
Van Dyne?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Stuter?
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you. The regular meeting of Wilmington City Council on September 2nd, 2014 is now in session. A council of the other men for August 19th, 2014.
Mr. Mayor, I've reviewed the minutes and found the errors. I make a motion that we accept the master's.
We have a motion by Alderman Stuter. We have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Stuter. Any discussion? Rocktable, please.
Stuter?
Yes.
Tudor?
Yes.
Persick?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
All yes. Motion passed.
Mayor's report. Just three things to announce tonight. The first thing I'd like to announce, we'll start with this, is always good to start with, right? Just got news that our bond rating has went up from an A to a A-plus.
Yes.
So hopefully we tend to go in different directions in the state, which is always a good thing, which is always very beneficial to the city. Want to make that announcement, I think stuff will be coming out in regards to the Esti, right?
Yes, C I Group Four. I think show us that cap. We can make caps.
So that's always good to see our bond rating. Would also like to announce the passing of Jim Gale. Jim Gale, many people know Jim Gale. Jim Gale used to serve on the Wisconsin many years ago. Was also on the county board for many years and opportunity to work for Jim back when I was just starting out. He passed away over the weekend, I believe it was, just to make the announcement, his visitation is tomorrow from 3:00 to 8:00 to the Basketball Field Funeral Hall. And then the funeral is Thursday at 10:00 a.m., the same rules with the burial, all the military honors that they were having to make. Just like to make that announcement. Next item, there's a couple of things I want to discuss about, or just kind of make notions about is first, Illinois High Street Rail is something that we probably haven't been paying much attention to because the Illiana's been going through. The Illiana High Street Rail, if anybody heard over the weekend, Governor Quinn made the announcement that the state was going to start, was going to provide funds to the Illinois High Street Rail in the event of adding a second rail line from Joliet or just north of Elwood down to the Garden, which would basically put a second rail line through the city of Wilmington. They did come and talk to us a few weeks ago with some very early preliminary engineering drawings in regards to intersections, you know, the engineering department. I think when I talked to the bullies, it's like no way that it didn't work, you know, to bring us up to this difference. But I just want to make everybody, keep everybody apprised of the situation and also take the time to go to other websites, Illinois, and I can't remember really exactly from the website, I'll have to look. But you can just Google Illinois High Street Rail Project, it's in there, and look what their plans are. And at the same time, I think we as a council need to begin working on formulating opinions and what our concerns are in relation to the High Street Rail project at the Council of Wilmington, and probably establish a resolution to that fact, so we can probably begin that type of discussion with finance administration and the next council meetings. Something also to keep in mind, it's, like everything else. But I also want to let everybody know that last Thursday, I took the opportunity to attend the Park District meeting and voice my concerns in regards to our current intergovernmental agreement and the direction that we seem to be going in, or if there's any direction of going in, but also more importantly, advise or utilize that opportunity to present the history of how we got to the point we are where we've actually made contributing funds to the Park District in relationship to them maintaining the parks. And for those who may not remember, for years, the Park District, or the city's had a lease agreement with the Park District, probably from its inception in 1940, they had a lease agreement of some sort or another between the city and the Park District. The Park District always maintained the property under that lease agreement. They had the insurance, they had everything else. Back in the early 2000s, or somewhere mid 2000s, probably 2002, 2003, with the high rate of drownings that were occurring and lawsuits, more importantly, the Park District was basically with the iParks insurance, they were deductible, that their insurance company was providing to them, was such an extraordinary high number that they were basically unable to insure the parks, therefore meeting their obligations in the lease agreement as it was written. So the city, recognizing that, took the time and worked with the Park District, actually ensured that the Park District could continue to maintain the property, but the city assumed the liability pretty much 100% in regards to the insurance because of the, the Park District's inability to insure, which everything seemed to go along smoothly, there was no, there was just a small transition. But in 2006, roughly 2006, it was determined at the council, the time to eliminate the trailers that were on the property there, if everybody can remember, those trailers were desperate disrepair, they had a lot of police activity in there, it was really becoming an eyesore on our island, so the city made a determination to eliminate those trailers on the island and kind of moved forward in a different direction. At the time, it was probably mid-budget year, the Park District again came to the city and said that a lot of the revenue that they got from those trailers, they utilized to help maintain the parks, and the city recognized that fact and took upon themselves to where the fee kind of came in to assist the Park District in helping to offset some of their costs in regards to maintain. But at the time, it was a temporary plan, probably a five-year plan, I think it wasn't what it was at the time, which was mostly temporary. Unfortunately, it's seen to become more of a permanent discussion of how the money's paid by the city to the Park District for the maintenance of the property. I did relate to them that I really didn't think that the city should be paying anything. We all have an obligation as elected officials, be it on the park board or the city council, basically, to take the tax dollars that we get from the people in this community and spend them as brutally and wisely as possible in relation to what we do services that we provide to our taxpayers, which we all know, if you look at your tax bill, I know my tax bill's probably full of $500 that I give to the city every year. But with that $500, I get a lot, I get flyer for my closets, my toilets flushed, I get my roads taken care of, pay, patch, whatever, I get the plow in the winter time, as well as I give police protection 24 hours a day, 7 days, 365 days a year, pretty good in my opinion for the amount of money that I've been spending to the city. So I did raise a question with, where they assume that, you know, my tax dollars for the Park District go? And we kind of left it at that. But at the same time, I did listen to what their concerns were, and they have some genuine concerns in the way we, in the negotiation portion of it, where they feel that there's not really a two-way communication, a lot of it is what they presented, and we don't really have nothing to present to them. So what I've taken upon myself is to ask that, to actually put together our numbers, and what we anticipate, what the cost is associated with taking care of the parks, and also take those numbers and present it to the two aldermen that are part of the negotiation process. And actually, I'm asking council to give those two aldermen full authority to do whatever negotiation is necessary. I think at the same time, we can also present our ideas and our concerns to those two people in the negotiations. I've also asked that on both sides of fence, to step more or less, take a backseat approach in regards to the negotiation process. The negotiation process should be between the elected officials, and we can go from there. It can be, I think it'll be a long negotiation, but I think if both sides have adequate numbers and what they feel is a true cost, I think it could be productive negotiation as well. Hopefully, everything will work out. We all have our concerns and our beliefs in regards to how the process works, but I think the most important is we're both active bodies, and we need to work together to come to some type of resolution, whatever that resolution might be. That's my speed.
Mayor's report.
Thank you. Citizens' comments, any citizens' comments? Yes, Ron.
Ron Finzer. Mr. Mayor, I have a question again regarding the handicap signs. It's coming up, bad weather's going to be coming up, nothing has been done.
Well, I know it was started to be done by your deputy chief, he's been over here, but at the same time, a lot of, if I'm not mistaken, a lot of the responsibility falls upon the state and how they control it, but we'll see, I'll get, see if I can get some more information. I haven't spent a lot of time looking into that, but I'll see what we can go up with.
Okay, because like I said, the weather's going to be getting bad, and after problem last winter, trying to find a place to park, especially, you know, the vertical signs, you can paint them on the ground, but you can't see them. The requirement is to have the vertical signs.
Right.
And then plus, I think the city ought to also revisit the ordinance violation, because there's different amounts on different signs, that people do have signs up, some are $250, some are $100. What is it? Nobody knows.
Yeah, I think it's $250, based on the state statute for handicap signs, it's $250, they should all be just take $250. But I know a lot of the regulation comes from the state, I don't know what department, but a lot of the regulations in regards to handicap signs, especially in front of businesses and stuff like that, is regulated by the state, to where enforcement comes and where, who determines how many they have and how many are supposed to have, I'm not sure on that one, we'll have to look at it.
Well, I understand that, and I thought that the chief had gone through that before, Gary, and the last story I got was that they were waiting for signs.
I'll find out, we'll find out where it's going, hopefully we should have an answer here, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other citizens' comments? Thank you, moving on. Planning the voting commission, the next regularly scheduled meeting is Thursday, September 4th, which I think is being canceled.
Cancelled.
Right, cancel back to vote. Building grounds, park health and safety committee, Alderman Persick, Alderman Van Dyne.
Mr. Mayor, the next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, September 10th, 2014, at 6:00 P.M.
Water, sewer, streets and alleys committee, Alderman Stuter, Alderman Kerwin.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the payment request to release the 10% retention, the amount of $32,110.44 made payable to S.A. Iser Construction for the North Island Pedestrian Bridge Project.
Motion by Alderman Kerwin, we have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Stuter, any discussion?
Is this like a leftover?
Yeah, anytime when the project's done, there's always a 10% retention withheld for so long, and then after that, once everything's met satisfactorily, no problem to release the money.
Well, we had, we had the back erosion area, to make sure that had stayed during the summer, so we want to release everything to rid of those, that curve area that was holding up.
Oh, yeah.
We asked that one off in two years.
Any other discussion? Rocktable, please.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Stuter?
Yes.
Persick?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Tudor?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
Our next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, September 10th, 2014, at 5:30 P.M.
Thank you. Police and Mesde, Alderman Stuter, Alderman Tudor.
We have a couple of things. Mayor, I move to approve the hire of a new police officer to the city of Wilmington Police Department for the fiscal year 2015 budget.
Motion by Alderman Stuter, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Stuter, any discussion?
Do we need another panel?
Yeah.
Do we need another panel? About four more.
Four more?
One right now, one, one good, thank you.
All right, Thomas Hance, appreciate it. All right, rocktable, please.
Stuter?
Yes.
Tudor?
Yes.
Persick?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
No.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Seven yes, one no, motion passed.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 14-09-02-01, an ordinance authorizing the donation of a 2004 Ford Crown Vic, no longer used, useful to the city of Wilmington.
Motion by Alderman Stuter, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Stuter, any discussion?
I'd like to know why we didn't put this out for the, for donating it to where?
Braywood. Braywood came over, but the chief did, I think he had about seven or eight vehicles, sure.
Chief Plots, if they've.
Yeah, the chief Plots put the word out to the other chiefs at meetings, they had a bunch of, well, he had a couple of vehicles that don't even start, if anyone had an interest in a vehicle, to come on over and take a look at it. So Braywood came over, and they have another vehicle they could sort of match up parts with, and just maybe make one vehicle out of it, so they asked if we would be willing to donate instead of taking it to the junkyard.
Does it run?
No. If it runs, it's, it's, it doesn't run safely, is the word that the chief uses. I think it turns, I don't think it turns over anymore.
It can drive into the.
So, so he's got, they're going to try to put two vehicles together for, using it as other school resource options.
Some of the other vehicles that we have, we use around here, you know? We have some that are in the toyard that will be going to auction eventually, once we have Kyle, Kyle's taken care of.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be bringing it to committee to ask for authorization to take those to the auction and get best price.
That's just squad cars, that's Steve's cars?
Those are Steve's cars.
Is this car going to be stripped? Is it going to all, all your equipment?
No, I think he said actually use this car because the body's in good shape.
I think all the equipment's out. Yeah, that's out already.
Yeah, all of it is out.
It's just a shell. Okay. We don't want to give him a squad car with all our equipment down.
No, we got all our stuff stripped out and put it in the shell.
What's the approximate value of this vehicle?
Well, I know the last time we sent them up there non-running, we were getting between like $800 to $2,000, depending on, you know, the parts and salvage at the auction yard. So this one is probably more on the lower end, so maybe between $800 and $1,000. They're probably, they parted everything out.
Actually, I had to ask the chief Plots that question, and he said they're all dependent on who came to the auction. There are cab companies, they might get $1,000, considering not, sometimes a vehicle's top of the brain, a lot more, a lot less, and vice versa, which is the end of the custom where they're hiding. I don't know if this vehicle's our role or not, and I have to kind of plan that, I think that's too big, so I need to throw some.
Any further discussion? All right, rocktable, please.
Stuter?
Yes.
Tudor?
Yes.
Persick?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
No.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
No.
Evans?
Yes.
Six yes, two no, motion passed.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, September 9th, 2014, at 5:30 P.M.
Finance Administration, Land Acquisition Committee, Alderman Stuter, Alderman Stuter.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the accounts payable report dated August 19th, 2014, in the amount of 20, excuse me, $221,333.28.
Motion by Alderman Stuter, we have a second. Second by Alderman Stuter. Any discussion? Rocktable, please.
Stuter?
Yes.
Tudor?
Yes.
Persick?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
I have a question to that. Sorry. He stated it was the check register date is August, something, it should be the one date is September 2nd.
We'll back that. We'll, sorry, we'll do a correct version of the next council meeting.
Was there 228,000 in the report?
The amount's right, I think the motion, I think the date in the motion was incorrect.
Wow.
Let's do, we can do a correct, well.
Yeah, this one is, oh, it's August 19th.
Let's do a corrected version of the next council meeting.
Wait a minute, why am I, my minutes since September?
I just have the time to collect on the actual legislative.
Okay.
221,000.
On the motion.
Okay, the amount is correct. The motion will go up.
It's the motion that has a.
Check register meeting date in the packet says September 2nd.
Yeah, that's correct.
Actually, the date on there.
And that should have been what was on. Yeah. Should have been on the motion.
Can I make a motion to rescind the, the motion in the record?
Well, let's see, the, it's just the motion base.
Right.
Agenda said, oh, the accounts payable report is presented by the city accountant, so the city accountant presented the one date, September 2nd, so we can go ahead and do a motion to approve the September 2nd one.
Okay.
And I think the other one, it might be a lot simpler, just to move to approve the report.
We don't need to strike the pre-raise motion? Okay. All right, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the accounts payable report dated September 2nd, 2014, in the amount of $221,333.28.
Thank you. Motion by Alderman Stuter, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Stuter. Rocktable, please.
Stuter?
Yes.
Tudor?
Yes.
Persick?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
Hey, I have the rest, I think. I move to approve ordinance number 14-09-02-02, an ordinance amending ordinance number 10-05-04-06, which approved a tax increment financing redevelopment plan and project for the Ridgeport Logistics Center Intermodal Facility Terminal Area.
Motion by Alderman Stuter, we have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Persick, discussion. Hey, Tony, do you want to go ahead and explain this to everybody?
Yeah, what we're doing is the Petto area, Travel Plaza area, we did the Tiff district, we didn't know where exactly the commercial district was going to be located, so the 1,248ers was created for the whole area, and then we would deduct once we knew where exactly the commercial was located. The Tiff Development Agreement, Annexation Agreement talks about Tiff district will not be impermissible in anything that's exonerated or just built, A P I D five. So before they get a building permit, we have to, we move this out of the Tiff district, so that when taxing bodies look at the date of the building permit, that date, it was no longer in Tiff, it's not eligible for all those incentives, and so taxing bodies will receive all their tax dollars in the, for Travel Plaza, which was a P I D. So you got a couple of clean, what they basically are, is cleanup ordinances, and then what we have to do is we have to send notices to taxing districts, and they notice it's been removed, and then we have to publish it in the paper after this. When we add property, there's a whole process of public hearings. When you remove, you don't need to do the public hearing process because the taxpayers are actually gaining on this, getting their taxes back. So you got one, two, got a bunch.
Yeah, all the stuff you got.
This is valid in relation to the same thing, you have to prove the motive.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Rocktable, please.
Tudor?
Yes.
Persick?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Stuter?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
I move to approve ordinance number 14-09-02-03, an ordinance amending ordinance number 10-05-04-07, which designated the Ridgeport Logistics Center Intermodal Facility Terminal Area pursuant to the Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act.
Motion by Alderman Stuter, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Stuter. Any discussion? Rocktable, please.
Tudor?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Persick?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Stuter?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
I move to approve ordinance number 14-09-02-04, an ordinance amending ordinance number 10-05-04-08, which adopted tax increment allocation financing for the Ridgeport Logistics Center Intermodal Facility Terminal Area.
Motion by Alderman Stuter, we have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Evans. Discussion. Rocktable, please.
Tudor?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Persick?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
Yes.
Stuter? All yes, motion passed.
I move to approve ordinance number 14-09-02-05, an ordinance amending ordinance number 10-05-18-01, which authorized the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city of Wilmington and Ridgeport Development Services, L.L.C., and Ridgeport Logistics Center 1, L.L.C.
Motion by Alderman Stuter, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Evans. Any discussion? Rocktable, please.
Tudor?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Persick?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Stuter?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
I move to, I move to the sixth amendment to the redevelopment. I move to approve, okay, there's others, sorry. I move to approve the sixth amendment to the redevelopment agreement by and among the city of Wilmington and Ridge Logistics Park 1, L.L.C., I-55 and Lorenzo Road.
Motion by Alderman Stuter, we have a second. Second by Alderman Evans. Rocktable, please.
Tudor?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Persick?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
Yes.
Studer?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
Next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, September sixteenth, two thousand and fourteen, at six P M.
Ordinance License Committee, Alderman Kirby Hall and Alderman Evans.
Mr. Mayor, next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, September ninth, two thousand and fourteen, in the Department of.
First, I'll back to the parking, Alderman Hall, Alderman Persick. Do we have executive session?
Yes.
Or planning commission? Uh, city administration report, Mr. Ervin.
Yeah, we have the, you've seen, we're advertising for the vine and river water mains. We talked about that, it took a bunch of time, so all the documents prepared, we come to committees, and we'll get that project out, hopefully to get awarded by the first week in October, so get that work done for those water mains, or roads, in the winter. We gotta get that work done in late October. So that'll be all in-house engineering, code's prepared, all specs, all the bid specs are ready to go, all the advertising's ready to go, so we'll talk about that in very near future. Route fifty-three, temporary light, the signs are up, they're gonna start the construction for Route fifty-three in South Arsenal, temporary lights up. Probably gotta eye-dod everybody to agree about locations of poles and utilities, and working with everybody out there with the railways and easements. So those lights should be, they're on two-week project, it's temporary lights up, which will help with getting the trucks in out of South Arsenal Road, and, and, you know, off to freedom, especially all the landfill trucks coming going to there. So the accidents will be active, the landfill trucks coming going. So that'll be good. Otherwise, canoe rescue over the weekend, if you heard about it, safe rescue, it went over the dam, a couple of canoeists were rescued by the fire and volunteers at our hazard group, so again, the dam's on the forefront of danger. We'll be talking about that. The audit draft, I believe, is coming up in two weeks, so should have a draft audit in two weeks. The goal is always to approve that audit in October, or accept and not approve, is what we do, accept the audit. So we'll be having, we'll be coming in, finance committee.
She's scheduled for next Monday.
That's right. So it takes about a half hour, forty-five minutes to run through that, so that meeting will probably be mainly an audit, probably just going to small items. Police facility, we're hoping, as always, we're keeping on top of it, but getting in there, get the painting started, and ceiling tiles going, they still have some more work themselves they have to do, William, Wisconsin, on the project. We're still targeting the week of my, October twentieth to twenty seventh, as a moving date. It seems to get more realistic as we now probably get all the trades done out of there. A few more things still to be done from inspections, and William, Wisconsin is required to do, but we're, we're sitting, sitting there still, probably with all the site work and the extra concrete delays during the winter, we're probably still looking at somewhere between that, around twenty thousand dollar, one, two million, twenty thousand dollars is probably what the bill's gonna come in at. We'll see where the final numbers start, start playing out, because we do have some credits from I C R and deconstruction when they did the project, but it's not gonna give twenty thousand dollar credit, maybe a couple thousand bucks at that. So we'll, we'll get it all spelled out in the report, probably at the next finance committee, what, what numbers are at.
Tony, can I ask a question on the inspection of that building that's on William, Wisconsin incident? There's no holdup on their end of getting anything? It just seems like they've been kind of, though.
There has been, there's been a couple of challenges, because when the trades guys all left, at a certain time, because they were waiting for the other trades guys to come in, you know, the electricians and the plumbers, and then they're waiting for the I D O C inspection to come in from the jail, and wait, wait for that to happen, they only have two inspectors in the whole state. There wasn't a big delay, I mean, they came down about a week later, once, once they were called, things like that. There's a couple of things that they wanted, make sure they had to keep things open before they could close it, see all the plumbing, plumbing inspectors. So a lot of it's been, once those trades had moved out, and tried to get them to come back, William, Wisconsin, gotta schedule them back, and during the summer months, trying to get them scheduled back is a challenge. They did have to do so, what they call the man, if they don't show up, there's gonna be a penalty. We did ask them to start doing that, and that they get their attention, have two trades to get back within a week, otherwise they're gonna be penalized because of.
Because it just seems to keep getting put on the bad burner by, and, okay.
It's, I just, there's just some challenges that they have with some of the trades getting back here in a tiny manner, because mobilization, let's say, they try to get a backdrop, a project to punch list. Normally, you try to punch those when they're here, but they have trades, you know, banking forward.
But, yeah. Delays been on William, Wisconsin, and our guys have been.
Right, understood. Yeah. Understood. And I say, once we get that direction, and we're okay with them, you know, doing demand for penalties, if they don't show up, because otherwise, we're gonna do the same thing to them, and they're just starting to cost us, even though it's not much, but it's costing us, two hundred dollars to store the locker still, and they have a spot for, for the locker company, and it's two dollars a month, it's actually seven dollars for the project that costs us, so.
Tony, what about the ones getting, will that be done before you?
Well, we're, we're gonna try to work on that, I mean, we're gonna do some basic, we gotta do some blanking, some things like that, formal landscape, we'll get some grass down, my shit's got all graded out now, so we're sort of debating either use a blanket to get down in there, because that's our cost, or just to fill some seat downs. Weather's been pretty perfect for grass to grow, as long as it stays in the seventy-three weather, sixty-three and ninety, I think we'll put some seat down in the next two weeks, and we'll probably go pretty good. Set up a blanket down, probably save us about six, seven hours. So we'll have some grass going, the rest of the bushes and things like that, we'll be doing that in spring.
Thank you.
The Route fifty-three and William, P L Road, we finally got everything approved through the state. There was two land acquisitions that we have to go for, for right-of-way. The property owners are okay with it, so now we have the documents probably back, the surveys back, for their property owners to sign on the south side of the road, and the county meeting, a couple more feet, right-of-way, for, because the road to avoid alignments going. So as soon as those documents get executed and get signed, we're hoping to put that thing out for bid, and been letting in, in the October, so at least utility work can maybe get done during the winter, and get started in that project right-of-way, spring come, to support the intersection for the road. Ridge update, Nycor has aggressively now showed up on the site, we're having challenges getting Nycor to get out there, but after a couple of meetings with them, they got crews out there, they're laying the pipe, so we'll have gas going up to McCade Transco, because they told them they had gas, they didn't need it, for everything that they're running, they need it for the winter, of course. And then they got all the design done, and all the piping and specifications from Michelin, and they're digging the trenches now for the piping to get into the Michelin site. What do you call cell one is, you know, we're pouring out there for Michelin. Cell two, we got five cells up to five buildings, we gotta put line down, it's really wet, so Michelin's okay, the extra cost for the line to go down for Ridgeport, so that'll maybe, should be, we are able to finish the excavation for the foundations, and really get that foundation, or concrete work going right at the end of the week or next week, and stay on task with the Michelin project. And then what they call Ridgeway, which is the road that'll be going on the east side of Michelin, getting out the new frontage road, we got all the strong work started out there, so a lot of the utility work has been moving, even though we've got a lot of rain out there, and haven't really slowed down any of the work. You'll be seeing the walls go up next week on the one building, because the one foundation is poured, so it'll be kind of impressive to see forty-eight-foot walls starting to go up from like five for the Michelin deal. And Travel Plaza, not everything's been approved at night, they're hoping to come in for building permit next week, and start doing their ground preparation. My guess will be, we'll have some construction scheduled, probably earliest they'll open up will be in March, unless we have a great winter, a light, light winter, but probably in March, we'll be hoping when it will open up. So we probably did a good thing on our budget staying conservative, not awarding the contract for the, for the city hall, because revenue we're expecting from there probably won't show up till next year's budget, for that project.
And let's see, what else in here? Does it delay? I'd have it delayed, one or two per day. I think all the received, where they possibly.
Oh, you did tell me today.
Not delaying one, project till next spring.
Till next spring now?
Yeah.
Yeah, normally, if they don't start by September first, they're roles, and then the project doesn't usually go, it's got asphalt in it, and like getting, so that over by end.
All right, that's a lot of work they're for.
Yeah, like birds and manholes, things like that. So probably, yeah, it's probably get delayed, so. All right, that's sort of the bottom line.
Attorney's report, Mr. Ervin.
Thank you. In the last couple of weeks, I've worked on a couple of real estate matters for the city, and got the assignment report.
All right, I need a motion to go into executive session, land acquisition.
Can you just please, a phrase that John wanted to use with that, of the.
And also in regards to setting a price for the sale of real estate owned by the city.
Setting a price, sir.
Okay, so that'd be in the motion as well?
Yeah.
Help them out.
I'd like to make a motion at seven thirty-eight, to go into executive session for land acquisition and setting a price.